Call to order, the regular meeting of the Dickinson City Commission. Let the record show, we're missing one Commissioner, Mr. Steiner. First item up is the Order of Business. Mr. Gah, any changes to the Order of Business?
Thank you, President Decker. There are no changes.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Gah on the Order of Business? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on the Order of Business.
So move.
We have a motion to approve the Order of Business.
Second.
The second. All in favor of approving the Order of Business, state aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is the Consent Agenda. Is there anything on the Consent Agenda that Commissioners wish to discuss? If there are no items on the Consent Agenda that Commissioners wish to discuss, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I would move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion or questions on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We do not have, well, we do have a timetable item, but we will complete the non-timetable before we move to that. So first item up is Sunrise Youth Bureau Funding Contract. Deputy City Administrator Carlson, you'll be handling that.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Just a little background, I wanted to give this Sunrise Youth Bureau funding agreement, it's a multi-year agreement. The background is the Sunrise Youth Bureau is a nonprofit organization dedicated to assisting the youth program, which includes the diversion, education, and out-of-school suspension programs to youth under 18 years of age. They provide crisis intervention service to families in need and provide emergency housing services or attendant care to youth who are displaced with their home. The educational school programs they teach and provide is to keep youth from entering the juvenile justice system and to help eliminate the crime committed by our youth. The city recognizes the value of the youth programming opportunities within Stark County and within the city of Dickinson and the key role that the Sunrise Youth Bureau plays in these activities. Presented to you is a four-year agreement with the desire to support the Sunrise Youth Bureau with a steady source of funding through a portion of our 1% sales tax, which is, as adopted, is dedicated in part to the social vitality of Dickinson and the southwest area. The agreement would commence on January 1 of 2020 and ending December 31 of 2023. The multi-year agreement would not automatically renew, but could be renegotiated. The funding would gradually increase per year and be broke down as, starting with $12,000 up to $20,000 in the four years. The Sunrise Youth Bureau agreement usually comes through our grant program, and it was the wishes of the committee that was going through these, pull a couple of these out and look at them because we do support them every year for their budget purposes and for ours, for our budget. We looked at maybe doing a four-year contract, so this is why I'm proposing this and so that they have some funding that they know that is going to support them. The contract also states that if the revenues were not here at the city, the contract would be null and void.
Okay.
With that, I would recommend, or stand for any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson? Any comments? I just have one comment. I'd like to commend the committee for making this decision. I mean, it's been a long time coming that we should have had this kind of arrangement with this organization rather than putting it into a grant, so.
Mr. President, just to kind of build off that, you know, I think initially why we pulled Sunrise was, as Mrs. Carlson said, you know, we believed that there needed to be a more definite funding source, but upon their annual reports, we really saw their statistics and data that indicated they have a tremendous impact on the city of Dickinson. And so I think it was a suggestion from all of us that we really needed to do our part in making sure that this program has sustainable benefits and can continue to improve their services as well. So, Mr. President, if no one has any other comments, I would move to.
Any other comments? Hearing none. We have a motion from Commissioner Trustum to approve this contract.
Second.
Second from Ms. Walla. Any further discussion? Questions for Mrs. Carlson? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item up is the approval of new job descriptions, and this will be handled by Human Resources Coordinator Nomenek. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. So I have before you two job descriptions for the Buildings and Codes Department. Currently, we have one building inspector position, and they're looking at making kind of a progressive job descriptions in the department, starting out with an entry-level building inspector one and then a more advanced building inspector two. What we would do then is reclassify the current building inspector position to a building inspector two, giving us the opportunity then to have that entry-level building inspector one. The building inspector one job description, as I said, would be an entry-level position. This would be requiring one to two years of college, as well as three years of experience in the general contracting or related fields. There are several job-specific certifications that would be required for this position. We did score it out at 625 points, and in the current pay scale, this would fall to grade four. If the new pay scale was approved and goes through, then this would be at a professional five in the new pay scale. The building inspector two position is the advanced position, requiring an associate's degree with bachelor's degree preferred, along with five to seven years' experience in the construction industry at the journeyman level. And again, several job-specific certifications would be required for this position. It did score out at 775 points and falls in the new pay scale at a grade six, I mean, in the current pay scale, and then the new pay scale would be at a seven, a professional seven level. And city staff recommends approval for these two positions. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to help you out or answer those.
Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on these two positions?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Trustum?
Mr. Fisher, Frederick, were you involved in the follow-up meeting after what discussion regarding these?
I was.
Can you go through kind of those meetings and what's involved?
We just mainly talked about some of the qualifications, I think. We clarified some of the issues between the one and the two. Talked about the placement on the pay scale. We worked up through some of those. We had some different thoughts, going back and forth, and looked at some different job descriptions that were similar. That's kind of where we ended up, how we got in place here, so.
Were there quite a few changes from the previous? I couldn't find the previous.
No, I don't think the job descriptions changed much. It was just more of a clarification issue and then comparing them to some similar jobs, you know, where they were on the pay grade. So I think we'd work through, Ms. Carlson, Mr. Gah, myself, Mr. Schwint, and we're all in that meeting at the time, in alley, I guess, from HR. Mrs. Nomenek was out of town, but was gone for some family stuff, so. But yeah, I think we, at the end of it, we all got together and were on the same page, so.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments, questions for Mrs. Nomenek or staff? I think we can approve both of these with one motion. So if there are no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on the two inspector positions.
I'd make a motion to approve Inspector One and Two job descriptions.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
The second. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gah, we have some 2020 tobacco licenses.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. City ordinance requires that if a merchant wants to sell tobacco or tobacco products, they must be registered and approved by the city. On top of that, initial approval each year, they must also renew, so they get sent out the renewal paperwork, and if they wish to keep selling, they send it back, which is generally the majority. You have a list here showing those that did send back all the renewal paperwork. I believe there was one that did not. Staff recommends approval of the list that did submit their required paperwork.
Any questions for Mr. Gah on the tobacco renewals? Comments, questions for staff? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion on the tobacco renewal.
So move.
We have a motion to approve the tobacco renewal licenses.
Second.
For the second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Gah, we have some reports.
Yes, thank you, President Decker. Couple of things for me. First off, recently, it's been brought to our attention, we've had some employees getting some certifications or recognitions, and we'd kind of like to start sharing that with you, so tonight, we're going to try that. We've got a few. What we'll do is I'll ask the employee to come up to the podium, tell you a little bit about what's happening, ask their department head if they have anything to add, and if you have any questions or comments, you can do so. So the first one is Robbie Maury. You all know Robbie because he's the budget specialist in the Finance Department, so each year when we do the annual budget process, Robbie's involved in that. He's been with us since March of 2015, and he completed the Auditor Certification Program through the North Dakota League of Cities. It's a program that consists of five courses, and once you start, you have to do it within a year, so it's a fairly short timeline, involves processes for property tax calculations, property management, or project management, budgeting, open meeting laws and record requirements, basic laws and policies on employment, and a great deal of things that, as you can tell, are not always here in a bigger city. You do a piece of the city auditor stuff. So Robbie does a lot of the finance, and he's set through all of those other exhilarating courses, so we're really proud of him for doing that. It was not a requirement of his job necessarily, so he went above and beyond. I don't know, Ms. Carlson, if you want to say anything else?
I'd just like to say that I was very proud that I had mentioned it to Robbie about this certification program. It just came out through the League of Cities as of last year. He jumped on it right away, and he progressed through it pretty fast, and I'm very proud to point out that he has contributed for them, so it's very good to know all those aspects that you're working with all those departments.
Now you can officially fill the role of auditor. Well, congratulations, job well done.
Congratulations, Robbie.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, next up, this one's kind of unique. Kyle Schmidt is a solid waste route operator, and if you watch much TV lately, you see a lot of commercials that talk about how you can get this device to put in your car, and your insurance company will give you a decreased auto premium. But we have a same kind of device in our garbage trucks. It's called Fleet Mine Software, and it watches everything and tracks everything that they do. And Fleet Mine is a national company, and they have what's called a Public Safety Hero program for all of their clients, and each year, they evaluate all the statistics, and those that are the safest drivers in their equipment get an award. And Kyle went through a ceremony earlier today, and I think Mr. Prowse will give us a little more information.
Yes, this is a new program released by Fleet Mine. Frank Flores is with us today as representative for the Western Region. It's an honor to be part of such an award. This is an internationally recognized award. It's something new that they just started this year. It's not only just in the United States, it actually covers the United States and Canada. And basically, Kyle was nominated from the city of Dickinson based on performance scores, and it was ran through from June through September. We ran the reports. Basically, it reads out the hard braking, the acceleration, speeding, different techniques like that that the truck operation is performing. And Kyle led it very well within our department. As many of you know, the solid waste industry is amongst the top 10 most dangerous jobs in the United States, and more often, it's actually listed within the top five. So we're always on the streets, we're on there every day, takes a lot of dedication, commitment, and Kyle, job well done.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Kyle.
Thanks.
All right, and this third one, I didn't warn the employee I was going to do this. The others were warned and prompted, but last month, there was a conference, the North Dakota Water Environment Association, and a number of employees went to that, and Gary Zuroff, our Public Works Director, received two honors. The first one is the Bedell Award that acknowledges extraordinary service to their association, and then the second one is really exciting. It's called the Five S Award, but it stands for the Select Society of Sanitary Sludge Shovellers. Quite an honor that Mr. Zuroff got that, and so we wanted to congratulate him. You know, he's been here since 2013, but he's been in the public works field for many more years than that, and we're glad to have him.
Well, congratulations, Gary.
Congrats, Gary.
Thank you. Job well done. Well, thank you, Mr. Gah. That is, it's refreshing. I think we need to do this all the time, recognize outstanding employees, so they all work hard for the city. And I know, as Commissioners, we're very proud of our employees, so. We'll keep moving. We have a conference update. Mr. Gah?
Yes, thank you, President Decker. This is the time of year, if you tried to reach out to many department heads over the last month, you might have noticed at least one was always gone. Several professional conferences occurred. I went to a couple of them, one nationally, one regionally, one for the International City Management Association. Normally, I don't like being away from home for very long, but this one was in Nashville, which is a fun place to be, and it was actually, as far as professional conferences, one of the best ones I'd ever gone to. It's a mixture of how to improve your community and how to keep from going crazy in this profession, so they do a lot of personal enrichment types of things, and I think it was very, very refreshing. And then last week, I got to attend one day of, I think, a two-and-a-half-day conference, and the mayor was there for the North Dakota Main Street Program. Very exciting, fairly new program, but a lot of excitement and a lot of very good sessions, and there were a few folks from Dickinson there, and I think we're ready to take what we learned and put into practice.
I would echo that, and I would also say that our turnout, while it was nice to, I think we had six individuals from the city of Dickinson between economic development, downtown, administration, and the commission. I would encourage Commissioners and especially engineering and planning and zoning to make sure we get to next year's or have a representative there. A lot of great ideas, a lot of people come up, you know, fired up out of that, and they do a lot of great things, and we need to get our name on some of the awards, too, because we're doing a lot of great things in Dickinson, and we need to start submitting some of our projects to get some of that recognition. It is amazing what is happening across the state of North Dakota with this Main Street Initiative. There are so many small communities just revitalizing their whole community, and it is, I don't think it's happening anywhere else in the nation like it's happening here. So it was a good time. We had a good time and learned a lot. It just, like I said, I would encourage anybody that can attend to attend it. It really, it does refocus you, and there's a lot of networking, too. There's a lot of people there that you can meet and get some new ideas, so. We have one more report, and that is our assessor, Mr. Hirschfeld. He has a State Equalization Board update.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. It's kind of evolved into an assessor's update beyond the state board, but I did provide two Excel spreadsheets to you. The top one is the parcels, reflects the parcels that were down at the State Board of Equalization and the adjustments that were made to them. There were 22 parcels that were contested. Of those 19, saw a reduction of about $11.7 million. That equates to about $23,000 of tax to the cities. Any questions on that before I roll into the abatements that we're entering the abatement season?
Any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld?
In the second page of the spreadsheet, those are the abatements that we'll be seeing here the next 60 days. Update from last week when I sent out the memo, we now have five property owners or entities that are contesting 28 parcels, so we're going to be in active abatement season again. A lot of those are vacant lots and with similar attributes, so we'll be able to group those up together, I think. Then a few apartments again, and then hotels this year. Like to see if we can get the abatement hearing scheduled. With the 2016 abatements, last year, there was a lot of, what's the proper word? Some of the protesters were upset with the timeframe on this and not having information submitted and considered, in their opinion. The judge had a little bit different opinion on that, and I'll send you his, since that did come in in the last seven days or so. But trying to make sure that we allow the property owners adequate time to have their information looked at. This year, I'd like to try and push this back as far as we can. I'm only allowed to push it back 60 days, so that puts us towards the tail end of December. Maybe we could squeeze it in at the front end of January, but the issue we have then is our regularly scheduled meeting is, I think, the 17th of December, which is right in the middle of the month, and then the following two weeks, we have Christmas and New Year's in the middle of the week. I was kind of hoping maybe we could hear it New Year's Eve, but we can do it Monday before that. It doesn't have to be an evening meeting, we can do it, you know, first thing in the morning, too, or, you know, following New Year's. I know it's schools off and all of that, too, so just kind of hear it, you know, to hear from you and see what works, and so we can get this hearing scheduled, and I can notice all the property owners.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Trustum?
I will be out of town most of that holiday time period, so if we can meet following January 1st, that would, otherwise, you'll have to have that meeting as well. And I can always call in, but this one is not really one of my, I'd rather be here for it.
So you're looking, Mr. Hirschfeld, possibly having it on the 30th?
Tuesday, the 30th.
That'd be Monday, the 30th.
I'm sorry, Monday, the 30th. Tuesdays, New Year's Eve is maybe out, but Thursday or Friday that week, which would be early January, would work for me as well if it pleases the Commission, so.
Well, we know one Commissioner is going to be absent.
I could do the second and third.
You would be back on the second or third?
Yes.
You're going to be around? I'm not going anywhere. Second or third work for you?
Friday morning, maybe.
Friday morning? Early?
The one, I guess.
Or, I guess, Mr. Hirschfeld, what's the standards for this type of meeting? What timeframe do we need to?
Certainly be at your pleasure. I mean, if we want to do it early morning, nine o'clock, earlier, I mean, we'll just notice the property owners, and they can come in the evening before if they're from out of town, and that way, they're ready, and if we do it first thing, they should still be able to get out and get home for the weekend, so.
What works best for you, Commissioners?
I mean, either Thursday or Friday. It doesn't matter to me, so.
Time, timeframe?
Thursday.
Yeah.
Thursday's fine.
Thursday at?
Nine AM?
Thursday at 9:00 AM.
Second?
The second.
The second, Thursday, second, 9:00 AM. Very good, thank you very much. That's all I have, unless you have further questions for me.
Any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld on any of the abatements or the state's ruling?
Can you just give me a little rationale on why some of these, what caused these properties to be reduced 99%? Are they unimproved, or?
And that's a very good question. The opinion from, given to the State Board of Equalization was that those properties, well, the two large ones were greater than 10 acres, and so that, there's a four-out-of-seven criteria that keeps it from being ag land or moves it from ag land category to commercial. And so the top two on that list were greater than 10 acres, which means that they were still eligible to be ag land. The one that got the less-than-10-acre sites was they have to be greater than 10 acres and not contiguous to ag land. And it was that "and," which is a different standard, if you will, different way of reading the language, that's kind of got some of the assessors, some of the others were, had been doing it this way here, while many have not, so it's not going to be just Dickinson, but it's, when I consider ag land, I consider land that's being farmed, and then it's been platted, it's been annexed into the city, and it still might be farmable, they still might be taking a crop off of it, but it's not quite still farmland any longer. And if it's contiguous to that, then it's considered to still be taxed as ag land. This opinion said not only the one that's contiguous to that, but if it's contiguous to that one on down the line. So pretty well, the way I understand the ruling, is any land that's brought in that's annexed in, that's been platted, but doesn't have public services to it yet, no matter what size the parcels are, can still be considered ag land. And that was the ruling from, by the state board, based off the advisement of their attorneys. That's not an AG's opinion.
So these are annexed, but they have no services?
Correct.
I have nothing else, so yes? Thank you, Mr. Hirschfeld. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a report on the, from the Police Department this evening, Animal Shelter update.
Hi, good evening, Mr. President, members of the Commission. Tonight, the Dickens Police Department would like to provide a little bit of an update as far as some of the activity that we're seeing at the animal shelter and some of the projects that we're working on. Tonight, I asked Animal Shelter Manager Dana Becker and Animal Control Officer Amanda Paulson to accompany me and provide the report.
Commissioner, Mr. President, thank you for your time, and thank you for your interest in the animal shelter. So far this, through October, we have had 618 animals impounded. 53% of those were returned to the owner. Six were adopted straight from the shelter. Rescue animals given to rescues is 39%, a little over 39%. About half of those went to out-of-the-area rescues, and the other half went to local rescues. We euthanized six animals due to aggression or illness, which is .97%, so less than 1% have been euthanized out of the shelter and not processed so far. We still have three animals from October into November, so we have three that are pending, so that's about half a percentage. The current projects that we're working on is we're looking for a new computer system to help manage the pound and some of the specific things that should be done when you're managing animals. Stark County has presented an MOU, so to contract with us to take their stray animals. We're interested in municipal code changes. Okay, why hasn't this done this to anyone? Municipal code changes, just some of the codes seem antiquated, and so we'd like to kind of move them up to make sure that. kind of move them up to make sure that we are doing exactly. Some of them are hard to manage or hard to enforce, so we'd like to change some of those. There has been some work with the DAAC on those, but that project's kind of stalled, so we'd like to see that. Get some new blood. There are some new life in that. We're working on a written protocol for the shelter. So, that's an ongoing process within, and then we're, have some outsources that we are trying to not reinvent the wheel, but if there's a best practice, that we're going to try to adopt those. The volunteer handbook is in the second draft, and that has gone out to the committee. Chipping and licensing, we'd like to go to chipping instead of the tags. So, ACOs would carry the scanner with them and maybe get those animals right back to the owners as soon as we could. So often, the little tags are not on the collars. They lose them, or they just, they don't have their collar on. So, in lieu of the tags, we would like to give them a chip. The tags would still be available until we didn't have those anymore, then the decision could be made if we made more of them or not. At that time, once we're ready to roll, we would like to see the fee raised. It's $10 right now for licensing, and it's a lifetime. Maybe go to 25 and then go back to licensing in correlation with the rabies vaccination instead of the lifetime. The paddock project, so cementing the paddocks, we did have a parvo breakout quite some time ago. And a parvo is, once it's in the ground, it's difficult. So, it is projected in 2020 that we are going to cement the paddocks. Another project, hope to purchase some of the product this year with this year's budget, is right now, our dogs are separated by chain link, and because we don't know if animals are vaccinated, so many diseases are transmitted through saliva or airborne, and so they should have solid surfaces in between each kennel. So, we are going to try to replace the chain link with solid surfaces, and that affects 11 of the 14 kennels for the dogs. We also need to get some top covering because some dogs can climb over, and so we're keeping every animal safe that's in the shelter. We are interested in an MOU with the veterinarian getting medical care into the facility. Also, that veterinarian would be advisory to us, so if they saw something that we weren't cleaning properly or that we weren't housing an animal properly, that we have an expert on hand to tell us what to do. Most veterinarians, or at least two veterinarians in the area, have their own facility, and so they're really experts on that. One of the things Amanda is spearheading is a picture with the Grinch. So, November 24th, at, from 2:00 to 7:00, people are encouraged to come out and have their picture taken with the grandchildren, animals, what have you, and a free will donation to the shelter. Okay, some of the things that we need that we're, we have some settling in the building, and it should really be looked at by a professional to see if, how troublesome it is, or if it's just cosmetic. We have some water damage to the walls. We need to be waterproof four feet up. We need continuing budgeting for the replacement of cat kennels just as we go, so they can be upgraded. Our gutters leak, and we need a maintenance person. Future projects that we're working on is an after-school children's program, so we can teach our youth how to care for animals and how important it is to care for something, to care for something that can't care for itself, to foster good practices in the future. A summer program for children. We're going to look into some fundraising so we can finish some of these projects. We might need to look for additional dog kenneling space. Just this last week, we had every kennel full, and two in two of the places. And this one seems silly, but the cats should not be able to hear dogs barking, and they can, and it just makes them, it doesn't do anything for their disposition while at the shelter. It doesn't calm them down at all. So, if we're going to do some revamping to address that. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Becker. Any questions for Dana?
What would the chipping cost compared to the tags?
You know, I don't know the price of the tags, but we think we can get the chip for about $5, so which is pretty reasonable.
So, the 25 would cover the chip?
It would.
Okay. That's actually pretty reasonable.
We could possibly go to 22, you know, it's doubling up, but I would like to see us go to every two years instead of the lifetime.
I think it makes more sense to do it associated with rabies, so you know they're staying up to date on their vaccinations as well.
Any other comments, questions for Mrs. Becker?
Just want to, if we impound a dog and that's not licensed, is there any penalty to that, to that person for not having it licensed?
I would say that we could be better at enforcing that.
So, there is a law in the book?
There is. There is.
All right. No more questions? Thank you. We'll move on to engineering. Mr. Kubis, we have Dickinson Hills request.
Thank you, President Decker. Yes, a few weeks ago, the owners of Dickinson Hills, and everyone's familiar with that, I think, TJ Maxx, Hobby Lobby, that strip mall, came and met with staff, Mr. Gah and myself, about their desire to rebid this project. It was bid last July, and our portion of that is Fairway Street, the city's portion of that. Those bids were not approved, so the project has been on hold since then. And I guess the development on the developer's side has been, since that project was last bid, it was held with Raden Development's team. That project was sold to another developer who, after the bid letting, had walked away from that project again. So, the ownership of the project is back in Raden Development Team's hands. So, this is a request coming from us, but really coming from Raden Development, to rebid Fairway Street. They've extended some of the leases, all the leases on that project. They are downsizing it slightly as the amount of stores to be built, but the main, the main strip mall that would be built with the TJ Maxx and Hobby Lobby are absolutely still on the table. Our portion of the project, the Fairway Street component, would really remain unchanged. They had a few areas that they would like to remove as far as the private side of the development. When they take this one store out, they would need less parking lot, less access roads. We have not seen those plans yet, but we did want to bring it forward to you, as this is a city project, requesting to rebid this again. As you can see in the memo, we don't have an exact date yet because they need to do some tweaking of their plans. They like to bid this all out together, even though our component will just be the Fairway Street package, so to speak. They'll have a site component, a building component, a private utilities component that they'll bid at the same time. So, the, I guess, the motion at hand, or the motion that we'd like to be approved or denied would be to rebid the Fairway Street project again from the Dickinson Hills subdivision. Again, with the understanding that the same financial commitment that was originally made to Dickinson Hills would still be on the table. I guess if Mr. Gah had anything else to add that I may have forgot, please do.
No, I think you did well. I think to probably emphasize the developers still working on all of the finalizations, but this would, the building time would be throughout next year, so everything would essentially be one year later than initially projected, so not too far off. Any other questions for Mr. Kubis or Mr. Gah on this project? Mr. Kubis, you're asking for a motion to rebid the Fairway portion of this project?
Correct.
Mr. President?
Mr. Frederick?
I think all of us here want to see this project come to fruition, so I'll be, I'd make a motion that we give Mr. Kubis the latitude to rebid this project.
We have a motion to approve the rebid?
Second.
With a second. Any further comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr., Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. And, Mr. Kubis, you have a millon overlay, the project areas for 2020.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. And I believe we have a map up on the wall, so the public might be able to see this. The streets are obviously hard to see showing the whole entire city of Dickinson, but hopefully you can make out the zones that we talked about. So, the streets and the zones were based on the pavement management plan that the commission had approved and was completed earlier this year. So, that really color codes the city by pavement condition. We tried to package these up into zones, addressing our streets that were, one, in the worst condition, but would also be fixable by a millon overlay, and, two, that when we group two or three of these together, would meet our budget, which is roughly $4.5 million. So, that's what KLJ really had done for us through their scoping process. We looked at these, had a good look at them before it snowed, and hopefully, we'll get a chance to look at them again, to get a little more detail. But what we've kind of deciphered here is that zones B, C, and E would be our highest priority project zones, and then also Zone A in Northwest Dickinson, if funding allows. So, on the spreadsheet that you had with that, it's the second line of the combination of those four, C, A, B, and E, at $4.578 million. We also included in that spreadsheet some of the costing, and I'd like to explain that a little bit more. It might have been confusing between the memo and the spreadsheet. So, in the spreadsheet, KLJ had put this together, and it talks about an estimate of, you know, that we'd need 100% of sidewalks or 25% curb and gutter, and that was based on their visual analysis of those areas. And they're all different, just depending on the age of the subdivision that they were built in. And then in the memo, it goes on to say that 100% of those costs would be assessed to that property owner. So, in KLJ's spreadsheet, just an estimate again of saying approximately, you know, 25% of the curb and gutter, and those numbers vary throughout the districts or throughout the zones, I should say. And then, based on our work session, what we were moving forward was to assess all those concrete costs to the adjacent property owner. And these numbers are saying we would assess 100% of those costs. The commission could decide, could decide to assess less than 100% of those concrete costs. But this gives you an idea of what that per lot cost would be, and that's the bottom line in each one of those zones in the spreadsheet page. It has an estimated lot assessment. Ones 4,000, 25,000, 8,000, 2,000. They vary widely because the size of the lots vary widely. There's also some areas that have very little sidewalk installed in them already. So, those areas, you know, the cost would go up for some of those areas. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that. We also have some reps from KLJ in the audience tonight with us that could help answer maybe some of the details that they put into the spreadsheets and the maps.
Any questions, Commissioners, on the percentage, the breakdown, the zones? The, Mr. Kubis, the, where we're going 100% curb and gutter and 100% sidewalk, are those, a lot of those have nonexisting sidewalk? Is that why we're at 100%?
I would say, yeah. Most of the other areas, that must be in Zone B, but most of the other areas do have...
Actually, it's C, but...
Okay, yeah. In C, the concrete in general has just deteriorated. So, there are the sidewalk and the curb and gutter in very, very poor shape. Zone B, the curb and gutter is pretty well intact, but it's just missing a lot of, a lot of the sidewalk.
But we would assess the individual lot. We're not going to group it.
Correct. Whatever's in front of your property would be the cost assessed to you.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Kubis?
And what if there's properties that have sidewalk? And then they would be excluded, or?
They would be excluded unless there was curb and gutter also in front of their property that needed to be fixed. So, if they had no curb and gutter and no sidewalk in front of their property that was needed or needed to be replaced, they would be excluded from assessing.
Mr. President, so are we approving this as well tonight?
What we were hoping to do, so we could really get into this, would be to approve the zones. The cost estimates will, you know, be a work in progress. We'll tweak those as needed as we get more information. But to go out and do the detailed study, because unlike, I'll call it a more typical assessment cost, where we install a water main, and everyone pays their portion of it based on their footage or their lot area, here, we're asking you to pay for what's in front of your property. So, we'll really need to have a very detailed cost breakdown before we take this to the affected landowners. So, you'll need to know exactly what we're intending to replace in front of your home or in front of your business.
So, Commissioners, what we're looking for, or Mr. Kubis is looking for, is a motion to approve the zones.
So, Zone B is mostly commercial. Is that correct?
Correct. And I can run through the zones that we're contemplating, just, you know, it's a little hard to see on the map, but. So, Zone B is the area north of 21st Street in northeast Dickinson, from 4th Avenue to Sim Street. Again, I think entirely commercial, as far as I know. The streets are really in need of a millon overlay. There are a lot of properties there that don't have sidewalk. I think the curb and gutter has, you know, has some life in it yet. Zone C is an area from 10th Street down to, I forget my streets here now, too, Allen Street. So, it's Allen, Benton, Carlson, and 10th Street. Again, the streets are in need of some work, and the concrete there is just in really poor shape, sidewalk and curb and gutter. Zone E is on the far east side of Dixon. It's generally 25th Avenue East. We broke down the cost, but our hope is that we would be able to do everything from East Valard, north up towards that Mobile Home Court by the interstate. It's where we spend, and I don't have the exact dollars, but we spend a lot of time and a lot of money patching that street. There is no curb and gutter or sidewalk along that route, so right now, you know, there would be no assessment cost for that work. Zone A is in Northwest Dickinson, like I mentioned earlier. It's from 21st Street north to 26th, 27th? It's a 26th Street. Bounder by 10th and 6th Avenue. We wouldn't do 10th or 6th, or 21st for that matter, but it's all a residential neighborhood there. There might be some multifamily housing close to 6th. You can see in the color coding for these maps, blue, I think, is the best. Green is good. Green is satisfactory. Then it goes pink, orange, and red. So, oh, no. Yep, pink, orange, and red. So, the pinks and oranges are kind of the ones that we're targeting, red, obviously. You see a little bit more red on the map. We've actually taken care of a lot of those red streets already in this year since this map was produced, so.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Big areas here of need, it looks like. There's some big areas of need that need to be worked on.
As always, there's big areas, and there's always more areas than... As always, there's big areas, and there's always more areas than the dollars that were allocated for this we'll take care of. But, you know, we talked in the budget meeting of putting this allocation of $4.5 million towards this project and possibly another year if funding allows. And that would really, really increase the level of our streets. I think it'll be just fantastic after this year and after the year after that. Our streets will be in really good shape compared to what they are today.
Well, and that was the intent of the concrete assessments for individual properties, so we could stretch those dollars farther so that we can address some of these need areas.
And I think it's important to note, too, that while we are assessing some of those costs, or, you know, that's the direction we're headed right now, assessments are just a method of financing. So the city's going to pay for this in year one, and those dollars will come back in year two, year three, year four, year five. So, over time, it'll kind of end up replenishing itself.
We haven't set a policy of payback and free.
We have not. You know, we wanted to get some dollar amounts in front of you, so you see that per-lot assessment, and maybe it's more relevant in the Zone C, where we're looking at more residential lots, or Zone A for that matter, where you can kind of get a better feel for what it would be for a homeowner, because the business lots, the commercial lots, are bigger, but they vary in size a lot more, too.
All right. So we're looking for a motion to, just tonight, just to approve the zones.
Mr. President, I would move to approve the 2020 mill and overlay improvement zone.
A motion to approve the zones. With a second. Any further discussion or questions for staff? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kubis.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Public Works, and we have Public Works Director Zurov. You have a reuse water line easement agreement.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commission. Just wait for the graphic to come up here. So this reuse line agreement is from the current custody transfer point of our reuse water line, just north of the current Dakota Prairie Refinery, north to the intersection of Highway 10 and 116. This is a great agreement to get finalized. There were originally three easements in that parallel 116. There was a water line, sewer line, and industrial water line easement when Dakota Prairie Refinery was built, and the intent was in that industrial line that that is where the reused water line would be placed, and that's what this agreement, this easement, gives the city. A 27-foot-wide easement for a 16-inch reused water line, approximately one mile north from here, to connect to the future custody transfer point for the next, to go west. If there's any questions, I can sure answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Zurov, considering this agreement? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on this grant of easement agreement.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the reuse water line easement with Marathon as presented.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Zurov? I guess my only comment with this has been through legal.
Yes, it has.
Yes, okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? Go ahead and vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. The next item up is planning and zoning, and that is a plat vacation for Diamond Acres Subdivision on 10th Avenue East and 21st Street. Planning Director Hadley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President and Commission members. This plat vacation went through the public hearing process through the Planning Commission. There wasn't anybody in the public that was opposed to it. This is an opportunity, it's a good opportunity. It's one of the subdivisions that we alluded to earlier in the meeting that doesn't have public infrastructure to the majority of it. Yet, it's an opportunity that the city and the developer can actually come back and replat this area into an area that works better, the way it's plotted currently. Doesn't work real well from whether it's the stormwater or existing road network facility. Engineer Kubis and I and the developer have been working on this and talking about it for, it seems like, a number of years. It is a good opportunity for all of us to actually regroup. The developer is in the audience if you have any questions. We don't have to have a public hearing on this. We've already had that. This would be Resolution 31-2019, and staff would recommend approval of it.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions on 21-2019? Oh, no, excuse me, 31-2019. And this is a resolution for a replat of Diamond Acres.
Vacation.
Vacation. Or vacation, excuse me.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to approve the vacation.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions? Like Mr. Hadley says, the landowner, developer is in the audience if we have any questions for him. If not, going forward, I think this is a great thing for the city to get this land back into usage, so... We have a motion to approve and a second. Hearing no further questions or comments, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We are on to our timetable, and that would be our eagerly awaiting museum director and staff.
Well, truth to tell, Mr. President, I'm not the one who's so eagerly awaited, I know. This is our third annual report from the museum center, and as we have the last two years, we'll concentrate mainly on the field season. In your packet, there was a summary of where we're at attendance-wise, gate attendance numbers, and some other of our revenue sources, and you see we are still trending upward. This is our, we're coming to the end of our third full year of operation in our current configuration, and I'm just very, very pleased the way things are going. The last two things I'm going to do is just mention a couple of events that we have coming up very shortly, and then I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Fowler. Want to make everybody aware of our Christmas open house. This will be December 6th, which is a Friday night from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. I have some live music. Our history curator will be doing some holiday displays in her side. And then in January, our annual murder mystery party. I know Commissioner Trustum is interested in that every year. Will be on January 18th, which is a Saturday evening, and I hope to see not only Mrs. Trustum but everybody else there if you have a chance to join us. So then, with no further ado, I'd like to bring Dr. Fowler forward to take us through the work he's been doing in the field and around the Badlands Dinosaur Museum.
Hey, thank you very much. My clicker's work. Yeah, look at that. Okay, yeah, so I'm just going to go through a little bit of things that have happened since I last spoke to the Commission, so just a little bit about the news, the things that have been going on, and some of what we've been doing this summer for field work. So, one of our big things this year was a new staff member, Darra Steffen. So she is a fossil preparator. She's working in our public viewing lab, cleaning up all the different fossils that we collect. She came to us from the Sternberg Museum of Natural History in Kansas. She got her undergrad degree at South Dakota School of Mines, and she got her master's degree in Hayes, Kansas, at Fort Hayes State. She's an expert on marine environments, especially ammonites, so these strange squid that lived in shells, went extinct with the dinosaurs, and then also she really likes marine reptiles, so I found her this picture. And there's Darra working on one of our projects just a few days ago. So she's rearranged the lab, so we now have six available workstations. And with Darra there, we're a lot more able to take on more volunteers. So if there are members of the community who want to come and work on some of these fossils that we have in the lab, to work alongside people like Destiny, who's just sat there, she's one of our volunteers and board members, please get in touch. We have loads of really great stuff for people to work on. So just yesterday, we had our third annual field report. This was given to the library, and we had a number of attendees to that who then came to the museum and saw some of the new fossils that we've been collecting. Most of the slides that I'm showing today are culled from this report. Just a few weeks ago, we had National Fossil Day, where we had some activities for children at the museum on a Saturday. This is something that's run by the National Park Service every year, so this year's theme was Ice Age Giants, so we made lots of sort of woolly mammoths and things like that at the museum, and that's something that we're going to implement each year. Also did a number of school visits, including here in town, but also in the bottom right, you can see myself and Destiny visiting Beulah School. So we had a request from Beulah School to go there and show the kids some of the things that we've been digging up and talk about dinosaurs. They'd just done a week's worth of projects on dinosaurs, so our sphere of influence in terms of some of the education things we're doing is spreading beyond just the local area. This is something we did in September. We were organizing this through this year, my wife and I, Dr. Friedman at the university. This is a research symposium hosted here in Dickinson for a few days. We had about 68 attendees, lots of research presented, and then we had a few days of field trips either side of that, and all sorts of great stuff. We had some various things, and our collections were identified by some of these visiting researchers. People came from mostly North America, but we did have a couple of people come over from Europe for this research conference. So it was a really good, really good size, good number of people, and we're very keen on running more of a symposium like this. Our fossil storage situation kind of follows on from that in a way. Last October, we got our repository status from the BLM, and I've been working quite closely with the BLM in the field. I've given about four tours, I think, of their staff, including one just at the beginning of September. We had 25 people on that of our field areas. Now, the regional officer for the BLM, Dr. Greg Liggett, attended our symposium, and he got to see our facility for the first time and the various upgrades that we've been making. And he's very keen on continuing the work that we're doing with the BLM. He suggested we get a memorandum of understanding with them so that we can be a sort of regional partner, that kind of thing, and with that may come some, they're doing some software upgrades to some of their collections management and things like that, and field reporting, data reporting, that they'd like to integrate us with. So, really, it's really positive, the work that we're doing both with the regional officers and with the national BLM, so it's really, really positive. Speaking of storage, we've had an opportunity to get hold of a lot more storage. This is a facility in Denver which is moving its collection to Virginia, so they're getting rid of a lot of their fossil storage. So we had the opportunity to get hold of many, many of these cabinets to store fossils in hundreds if we so desire. So we're arranging on getting some new fossil storage. These cabinets, each individual one, would retail for about $1,000 to $2,000, something like that, so it's a substantial gain for our storage capacity. Something else that I got recently that I'm just super excited about because they keep arriving in my office. We got a fabulous set of 19th-century monographs. We got these from a library that was getting rid of them in California, and these are beautiful. These are some of the first dinosaur bones that were ever found. These are from England. There's about 150 volumes of these things, all rammed full of these beautiful old monographs. So we're hoping to use these in future exhibits in the museum, either for the history of paleontology, the history of dinosaur bones, or perhaps even the scientific illustrations of the art aspect of the museum, too, because they're pieces of art as well as being important Just a little bit of fun with the website. We got a best-of list from Reader's Digest last year, and then earlier on this year, we were put into the eighth-best dinosaur museum in the world by one of the travel websites, which was quite funny.
Outstanding.
We're not the eighth-best dinosaur museum in the world, but the way I take it is that they go to our website, they see what we've got there, and they see some of the positive things we have going on, and they say, hey, you know, we're worth putting into one of those lists. So for me, it's kind of an approval of some of the things that we're putting together. And I also had a good joke at the head curator at the Smithsonian, because they finished ninth, and they just had a $130 million refit of the museum, but they were one space behind us, so... I had a little laugh with Hans about that, so, yeah. Keep trying. So a few things have changed in exhibits. This is a Warwick's duck. This was on exhibit temporarily next door in the history area, but we've moved it into the main exhibit. In this bottom corner here, we can see Filippo Bertozzo from Italy. He came over for the symposium and was very excited to see this specimen. It's an injured duck bill. It's got a really badly damaged tail. We've had some additions to the claws exhibits, some new panels and things. The mummified arm that I brought a cast of into this, into the commission meeting, I think a couple of years ago, is now on exhibit. We still have another bit to add to go into this area, but people can now come in and they can see the skin and the mummified finger and stuff of this hydrosaur, this duck bill. Larry the Triceratops has been on exhibit in the museum for many years, I think 20 years now. Every now and then, we have to go in and dust all the dinosaur bones, so we climb in amongst them and get our feather dusters out and clean all the dust off. And one of the times when I went in there to do that, I noticed a few of Larry's tailbones were all fused together. There's actually five of them all fused together in a big lump. So at some point in his life, he must have whacked a tree or been stood on by a member of his herd or something like that. So one of my field crew had wanted to do a research project, so I said, well, why don't you describe this specimen? So we sent the manuscript off earlier on this year, and it's come back, and we've got a few little corrections to make, but it's basically good to go. So shortly, we'll be slightly altering this exhibit and talking about the research that we've done. And we had this really nice reconstruction done by Andrea Tuchin, who's one of the world's leading dinosaur artists at the moment, showing poor Larry with the bent tail that he would have had in life. So we'll adjust our exhibit to show that. And this is just another one of the real, real pieces of world-class quality that we're adding to the museum. This is going to be an image that we can use for merchandise in the shop and stuff like that, too. So this year's field work, we spent, as usual, we looked for new sites, and we also dug up some of the things that we found in previous years, so this is part of our field area of the Judith River Formation. It's about 78 million years old, when the central part of the United States was covered in a shallow seaway. But we're right at the edge of the seaway, on a big delta. This is the Judith River Formation in Montana. It's this purple area of the map, and we worked quite a lot of different parts of this this year. This is one of our sites. This is a kind of typical site that we found early in the season. These are all little bones coming out of what we call a lag, and these are bits of fossil shells. So when we find a site like this, we get on our hands and knees and look for little things, and we find all sorts of great stuff. This is a tyrannosaur tooth. We have loads of armored dinosaur teeth, for some reason, coming out of these sites, and these are from one of these ones that doesn't have a tail club. I don't know why we found, we found about two dozen of these. I don't really know why, because they're usually quite rare. Tells us something about the environment in that area, a new area that we were working this year. This is a really cool crocodile snout. These are the tooth sockets. This is the tip of the snout. That was quite fun. And even things like hand claws, odd hand claws from one of these weird oviraptorid dinosaurs. I'm sure we'll be hearing a little bit more about those, maybe in a few months' time. This was a really cool thing that we found at another one of these microsites called Paki Micro. Baby bonehead surprise. We found these little pieces coming out. And what is it? What is a bonehead? So this is a stegosaurus. This is one of these strange, lumpy-headed dinosaurs. These were about seven feet long. They weren't huge, and they had these great big domes of bone on top of their head. There's a very, very small brain in the middle of that. It's mostly solid bone, so they're not that smart. The part that we found, if you imagine looking down from above, you get this kind of top view. We've got parts of the dome in the middle, and we've got little bits of the shelf at the back, and then a part where the eye is here. Now, the cool thing about ours is that even though this is a small dinosaur, our specimen is very small indeed. It's a very young individual. So we'll be going back to that site, looking to see if we can figure out where this thing is coming out, collect some... is coming out, collect some more parts. But this is a research-worthy specimen that somebody will eventually publish on, so pretty cool. Liz found two centrosaurus sites this year, so this is Centrosaurus, one of the horn dinosaurs. This is the first one. Doesn't look too amazing right now, but this is kind of how you find things when you're in the field. This is actually the eye. This is, the eye would be here, in this space, and then this is the sort of horny pile of rough bone around it. This is what we have from that site, so we have part of the cheek, we have both of the eye horns, and we have part of the nose horn. So we'll usually find fragments like this on the surface, then we go back in future years, excavate to find more. Has a lot of potential because we've got these, all these skull bones, they were a bit scattered, so I expect there'll be more of the skull there. We're very excited about that site. This was another one, only about 100 meters away, about 300 feet away. Liz Centro, too. I'm very excited about these because I work on horn dinosaurs, so this is really cool for me. This is good-quality bone. It was a little bit broken up, but it was good quality and well-preserved. This is the parietal bone from one of these, so it's the back part of the frill. The colors on the arrows are dropped out a little bit, but what we're looking at here is we have forward-pointing spikes, that's these ones, and then inward-pointing spikes, and then some other ones going down the side. And this is the best bone to find to figure out what species you have, so we know we have Centrosaurus. This is a photograph taken only a few days ago, and we're working on this right now. In fact, Dara has started cleaning up what we think is this part here that's currently missing. So I expect this is actually going to be a really nice bone when we've pieced it together. We also have the nose horn of that specimen, so probably the same species as before. It's got the back of the skull, the nose horn, a little bit around the nose, and we will dig in here as well next year and hopefully find more of this skull. Two really cool sites of a very similar, probably the same species. Sort of related, I think I may have shown you this slide a few years ago, with big horn bone bed. This is a horn of another Cerratopsian dinosaur that we found in 2017, and I was really excited about this because it was an eye horn. So we know Centrosaurus doesn't have eye horns, so this was something else. It was an interesting, one of the longer-horned ones, which is one of the kinds that I work on. So I was super excited about digging at this site because there were hundreds, lots of bones sticking out of this one bed, so we got an excavation permit this year, and we went and dug in. And very quickly, we found lots of leg bones, lots of toe bones, even parts of skull bones, but Liz is looking very pleased here because these weren't horn dinosaurs. That horn was from a horn dinosaur, but all the other bones that we dug up were from a duck bill. And so Liz works on duck bills, so I found her a nice duck bill site. This is a bone bed with dozens of dead duck bills that have all fallen apart, many of them young ones, so she's very pleased about that. And this is a beautiful little claw. It's quite a large claw, actually, of an adult, probably what we'd call a brachylophosaurus. But there's beautiful skull bones from the same site. Here's some more. We've made lots of jackets around these ones. We haven't cleaned up most of these yet. There's an arm bone here, and a few of our volunteers neck to some ribs. There's hundreds of bones preserved at this site, and we've got many years of digging to do here, or maybe at least a couple of years. There's also lots of tyrannosaur teeth mixed in. As you might imagine, with lots of dead dinosaurs lying on the land surface, the local tyrannosaurs caught wind of it and came over and had a field day, so we have lots of large tyrannosaur teeth from tyrannosaurs that were pulling all the meat off of those carcasses while they were there. Now, the duck bill that we dug up this year, we found this site last year, called it Had Enough. There were some nice little bones coming out of this block here. We probably wouldn't have bothered with this site normally, except this was interesting for another reason. This is what we pulled out this year. And what's interesting about this specimen, even though it's only a small section of the tail, there were other bones there, but they were mostly destroyed. The interesting thing about this specimen is it's pathological, it's been injured in the same way that Warrick's duck was. This is a spine that comes up from its back on one of its vertebrae, and that's the hole where the neural, where the spinal cord goes through. And if you look at the top of the spine, what's happened is something's hit this animal from above when it was alive, and it split the spine in two and forced it down around the edges. And it's actually the same injuries kind of that we see in the Warrick's duck specimen we already have at the museum. So when we found this, it was really cool because it's a second specimen that has the same injuries as we see in Warrick's duck that we're already doing research on, so we now have another specimen that we can put on display. So we're sort of finishing up piecing it together, but it's actually really cool. It's extremely injured, quite unique, so that's really cool. So obviously, our main showpiece is the tyrannosaur we've been working on, which is still one of four tyrannosaur sites that we have in this area. This is it when we found it in 2017. You might remember there were foot bones sticking out of the cliff, so last year, we went back in, the foot bones were here, and we dug in, and we quickly found that a lot of it was in this big, heavy concretion. But there were bones outside of the concretion, and this is basically what we thought we had. Here's the concretion, and then these are the outlines of bones that were exposed. So we think we've got, well, we have got a tyrannosaur. Usually, they have the neck pulled back, so we think that it looks like that. The tail comes out and then goes back in, and we've got all these belly ribs and part of a shoulder blade that blew out as this animal burst as it was rotting. And the feet, both feet were down in this area. So that's what we'd exposed last year, and we had hoped that we'd be able to maybe get a helicopter in this year to lift out that big block, because it weighs, it weighed at that time something close to maybe 20,000 pounds. And this is a beautiful specimen from Alberta. So this year, we went back, we got our electric cement saw, and we started trimming down that block. We were taking off lots of the heavy rock off the top of it, cutting into the surface in big, long slices, making like a checkerboard pattern, and then we get a hammer and chisel, and we just whack between them, and they split off. And we did that over a number of weeks to reduce the size of that block, so maybe it was a bit more manageable. But while all that was going on, we couldn't all hang out at the site while the soaring was going on, because only one person can soar, and you have to keep away for safety's purpose. So the other of us, other of us would go out and look at other sites while that was happening. So this is a site that we had worked a little bit last year and found a few small pieces of bone in amongst this gravel, but I saw some bones coming out of the cliff, and this turned into a pretty cool little skeleton. I realize my drawings are not amazing here, but there's all the vertebrae articulated down here, there's a leg, there's a left knee, we actually have the lower leg and the whole foot here, and there's an elbow and a hand and a number of pieces that fit on at this end. This is a little critter called Champasaurus. This is another skeleton in another museum, but we have basically the complete animal behind the head, all the way down to the tip of the tail, which is pretty cute. So we're going to be cleaning that up at some point in the future. It's not a dinosaur, it's a kind of primitive reptile, sort of between lizards and crocodiles. They're extinct today. They're actually quite common here in North Dakota in slightly younger rocks. They had a rather boring life. They would just sit at the bottom of the pond, a bit like this poor frog here, sort of looking up, and every time if a fish swam by, they would snap at it, and that was, that was mostly the limit of their existence. The males had such weak legs, they couldn't even get up on land, but the females had to, to lay eggs, but it's pretty cool. It's the most complete, the one that we found is the most complete Champasaurus skeleton known from that unit, so it's something else that will be researched in the future. But after my couple of days digging that up, I'd go back to the tyrannosaur and see the progress that's being made. So we trimmed down that block, so we got it nice and thin, and we started undercutting it. So we now have it fully undercut, so we can get straps underneath here. We have about 80,000-pound capacity of jacks currently jammed underneath there, holding it up in a nice, even way, and it is ready to be lifted by helicopter. We can get some straps underneath and lift it out. This is me standing at the top of this 10-foot-deep hole that we dug to get this thing. So hopefully, next year, we will be able to lift this thing out and bring something like this on display here in Dickinson. Meanwhile, back in the prep lab this summer, Dara has been working on cleaning up the bones that we had already collected from this site. So this jacket here is the tail, well, it's one-third of the tail, so you can see that just below the slides here. That's about one-third of the tail. We've also got lots of belly ribs. Destiny has been cleaning those up, so some of those are really cool. They've got little injuries on where this animal probably took a kick in the ribs. This is one of the foot claws that was collected from the foot area. This is a shoulder blade with a coracoid, and then this is the wishbone, beautiful 3D-preserved wishbone of a tyrannosaur, which is pretty cool as well. We're thinking of getting that one molded and cast so we can make it out of chocolate and sell it at Thanksgiving, that kind of thing. And that's what I have to show you. So, yeah, we'll be collecting more of the tyrannosaur, hopefully, next year when we can lift it out, and various people to thank for funding, preparing fossils, and of course, all my field crews. Thank you.
All right, well, awesome presentation. Any questions?
Fascinating.
Yes.
Very, very exciting.
I feel like I could listen to you talk for a few hours.
I was only given 15 minutes. I could have made it last a few hours.
No, it is very exciting. I tell people when I'm out and about all the time what you guys are doing. It's very exciting, so. And I can't wait to see all the, your hard work come to fruition, and hopefully, we can, we can provide some additional space in the coming years for this, this museum, because I think it's, this can be one of those top 10 in America, what you guys are doing, so.
Well, thank you. It's, it's great, and I really appreciate it.
Dr. Fowler, real quick, so is that your specimen right there that you referenced in your later slide?
In the jacket? Yes, that is, that is part of the tail of this tyrannosaur, one of the four. This one is, it's not a huge tyrannosaur, but I actually do have a big tyrannosaur I'm going to start work on this year. But this is the articulation.
So that would be probably like a juvenile?
Yeah, it's about two-thirds grown, something like that. The other one's a real big bruiser, but this one's beautiful because it's articulated, and it has some really great potential to have even maybe skin preserved, because we know that skin is preserved in this really hard concretionsary rock. That part of the tail wasn't in the concretion, which is why it was so, why we're able to remove it and get it cleaned up so quickly. We have other parts of the tail that are completed, and we're going to start work on this.
Wonderful. Really good work. You guys do an awesome job. Any other comments, questions for Dr. Fowler? All right, well, thank you again. We always look forward to this.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item 10, which is public issues of city concern not on the agenda. If you have any issue not on our agenda this evening, please come forward, state your name, and let us know what your concern is. Anyone from the public? Anyone with any concerns not on the agenda? Seeing no one from the public has any concerns not on the agenda, we'll close that. Commissioners, any items you wish to discuss that weren't on the agenda? Bring up anything?
Mr. President, I just wanted to follow up on one of the conversations we had earlier about some of the state conferences, and I do think there's a lot of value, and it's important for, for our community to be represented, so I think, just for the record, we need to do a better job at, you know, making sure we have representation from the commission, but staff as well, and, you know, if one person can't attend, then we need to make sure someone is attending in their place.
I agree.
So that, you know, that we're definitely bringing back that, that knowledge, but also representing Dickinson on the state level.
We have to be at the table. You cannot, cannot be absent, so. Anything else, commissioners? Okay, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Some of.
Second.
We adjourn.